Or make corrections as necessary.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. We're gonna get started with PZ 2024-106. Ms. Ingraham.
Good afternoon, Commission.
Good afternoon.
The City of Beaumont requests to abandon a portion of the right-of-way located south of 2505 Gulf Street, between Gulf Street and Euro Street. The right-of-way is approximately sixty by three hundred feet in size. It appears that over time, this right-of-way was rocked over by the businesses abutting it. It is the best interest to abandon the right-of-way to allow businesses to continue this use, however, maintain an easement to allow the city to access and maintain the existing water and sewer infrastructure. The planning staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, the City of Beaumont will retain a utility and access easement for the full width of the right-of-way for both existing water and sewer utilities. And number two, no permanent structures or appurtenances shall be placed within the easement property. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is aerial photography or aerial footage of that property. This is the subject property looking down, or from Cottonwood through Euro Street. And then this is from Euro to Cottonwood. This is the owner that owns from Cottonwood through to Euro. And then this is the opposite side of that right-of-way. And we do have the applicant, I'm sorry, it doesn't appear that the applicant is present. Sorry. Applicant is the City of Beaumont, forgive me. We are present.
Well, would you like to say anything else?
No.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am. This does not require a public hearing, so with that, we've heard from the, from the city, and I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with the two conditions?
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion in the matter? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in oppositions? The ayes have it, thank you, ma'am. Let's go to PZ 2024-111.
Access Surveyors has requested approval of a replat of lots five and six of Barrington Heights, Phase twelve into lots five A and six A block fifteen Barrington Heights, Phase twelve Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to shift the common lot line between lots five and six approximately two and a half feet to the north to increase the size of the real property to the proposed lot six A. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, the rear inside setback lines to be removed from the plat prior to final recordation. Staff did send out twenty-four property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area on the screen outlined in red, that's the area under review. And this is the proposed plat. You can see that common lot line is shifting two and a half feet. We do have the applicant and the owner present.
Any questions for the lady? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, Mr. Bracken. I get to see him once a week now, right?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Planning staff, thank you. Thank you for all your work. I'm here to answer any questions. We're just shifting a lot line over two and a half feet to meet a minimum building setback requirements for these lots.
Okay. Great. Any questions for the gentleman? Oh, yeah. We do need your name and address for the record, please.
Allow me. My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors. Our address is 11025 Old Both Road, here in Beaumont, Texas, 77713.
Thank you, Mr. Bracken, you're released now.
Thank you.
You're really upset that somebody else caught that, right? Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I will look for a motion.
Motion to approve with the one condition?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with one condition and a second, any discussion in the matter? None is heard, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Now, that we don't have anything else to do, we'll just sit here and wait, right? Now, you said something about the city council not ever being on time. Was that being recorded or not?
It was, they know, they're gonna get here right at 3:15.
Okay, we'll wait five minutes.
Five minutes, they'll be streaming in.
Mayor, any word of wisdom?
They're never early, they're only on time. But Randy doesn't count, Randy's a hoist.
PZ 2024-109. We have to wait. We can't go. A few times, we... Otherwise, we can't. It was...
Can you see this?
Here for a while. I can get this off.
Great. How you doing, friend? Very good. How you, how's it going? Good coming? Good, okay, good. Back to work? Cause you can't find a tab in the way in the back. I retire, but no way in the back. They weren't... They're also long. They're moving. Goodwill.
Good afternoon again, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna get started with our continuation of the meeting with the city council, and the honorable Mayor Roy West is gonna get us started.
Mayor West? Mayor Pro Tim Turner? Absent. Councilmember Durio? Absent. Councilmember Felschaw? Councilmember Getz? Councilmember Neeld? Absent. Councilmember Samuel?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. We are gonna get started with our cases. Number one is the PZ 2024-109, and I understand that this case is being tabled, and we do need a motion to table that, that case, please.
Motion to table it?
Second.
We have a motion to table PZ 2024-109, and we have a second, any discussion? None is heard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Next one is PZ 2024-91, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Gerald Callis of Care Infusion requests approval for a rezoning from residential multifamily highest density and neighborhood commercial district to general commercial multiple family dwelling district for the properties located at 7090 Fielan Boulevard and 7095 Prutzman Road. The intent of the rezoning is to accommodate more amenities along Fielan Boulevard and the expansion of the parking lot of the existing business towards Prutzman Road. Furthermore, Fielan Boulevard is categorized as a major arterial, and common planning practices encourage commercial uses along such roadways. Planning staff recommends approval of the request. We did send out eighteen property owner notices, and we received two in favor and zero in opposition. In favor stated, they like seeing the new development along Fielan Boulevard. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review, so you can see that it's a split zoning. To the north is residential multifamily highest density, which is that orange, and then to the south is neighborhood commercial, which is the pink. This is the subject property. This is the new Care Infusion building that's going up, and then to the right is a couple lease spaces. This is subject property off of Prutzman. This is to the north, to the east, south, and west. I'm unsure if we have the applicant or the owner present, we do. We do have them present for any questions. That wraps it up.
The applicant? Good afternoon, sir. Would you like to come up and tell us more about your project? If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Conlon, can I get you to hit that button to turn on your mic at the very, very top? So it's a green light? Yep, thank you. You turned it off, turn it back.
No.
Perfect.
It's okay now, perfect. All right, any additional information you'd like to give us, sir?
Yes, sir, well, just for the, the new location that we built, just so that he would have room for additional parking is the, is the main purpose of what we're trying to get this approved for.
Okay. And there's gonna be a drive-through traffic between the two streets?
Well, there would be access from the back, but everything's intended to come from the front.
Okay. But there will be driveway into the other street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We have heard from the staff and also the representative of the owner. They're looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, file PZ 2024-91.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. PZ 2024-105.
Ibonia Winfield requests a specific use permit to allow an event center in the Central Business District located at 515 Magnolia Avenue. TPB Studio will offer flexible venue space configurations for gatherings of different sizes. The use of the event center at this location will promote pedestrian activity and aid in economic growth of the downtown area. It should be noted that the Central Business District does not have required off-street parking. However, our city's traffic engineer has concerns that during larger events, excessive on-street parking could overcrowd the street and prevent emergency service vehicles from being able to navigate freely. Therefore, staff has recommended approval with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. And number three, to ensure safety and prevent future parking issues during large events, the owner will need to submit a written parking agreement with nearby property owners to ensure proper overflow parking. It will be the responsibility of the owner to enforce overflow parking during these events. Staff did send out thirteen property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. This is to the north, to the south, to the east. And I do believe we have the applicant present.
Is the engineering here?
Yes.
I'm, I'm having a little difficulty with item number three. What is a large event? And how are we gonna mitigate this? I mean, it's nice to put stuff on the paper, but how do you enforce it?
So, right now, it looks like there's about sixteen spaces that are there. In reality, he may need to come, or they may need to come forward with a parking lot permit, because that may need to be striped, as this is a new use to the site. So really, it's about thirteen spaces that are there, accommodating for one accessible parking space as well. And when I was talking to the traffic engineer, you know, he described that more than fifteen people, you know, there are thirteen spaces, so more than fifteen people may call for a larger event. And again, the, the intent is that, you know, Magnolia Street, well, and even Calder, you know, the sides have bike lanes, so it would be tough to accommodate the on-street parking on that side. And then Magnolia... And then Magnolia is very limited space as well. I can probably, yeah, get a good picture there. That's Magnolia Street. So you can see that the middle lane is reserved predominantly for turning and whatnot. So it'd be tough to accommodate on-street parking over there. Again, there's no requirements for Central Business District for off-street parking. However, in this case, with the issue of, you know, if people were to actually park on the sides, it may prevent emergency service vehicles to be able to navigate. And that's where we're trying to make sure that they have an agreement, you know, between a property owner that's adjacent to this property to accommodate any overflow parking. So should those thirteen spaces be filled up, those cars need to be able to navigate to the nearest spot and advertise it as such.
And how are we gonna assure that that happens?
So essentially, a parking agreement would have to happen. They have to submit that to our traffic engineer. And then, you know, in this condition, it is the responsibility of the owner to enforce it. Should, you know, the on-street parking become to be overcrowded and it's not being enforced, we would have to then revisit this specific use permit as that is a condition that the owner would have to enforce.
So to answer your question in terms of enforcement, is that if police go out to that area and they can't get down the street, they report it?
The building, seven thousand square feet, it probably require, would fit at fifteen people, fifteen square feet per person, which is very, very unusual. That requires, that would come up to seven, four hundred and sixty-six people. And let's say if every four people ride in a car, that'd be a hundred cars. I don't wanna drag this on, but how in the world does your engineer gonna mitigate this?
But all this is predicated on them striking an arrangement with parking.
Yeah, so the-
So it's not necessarily set for that particular place to house all the parking.
So there is a difference. If we have a hundred parking and they have sixteen, the difference is about eighty-some odd parking spaces.
So just for clarification-
Are we gonna, are we gonna require a specific number? Or are we just, I just, look, guys, we can just say yes and go on, but I don't wanna kick the can down the road and have this be a police problem.
No, I definitely wanted to, for clarification, engineer made a recommendation that if the commission wanted to consider it, they would want you to consider it under the guise of this for safety. So the commission, again, it's a recommendation from engineer, they don't, they don't have the ability to enforce it. How it would be enforced is someone will make a complaint and the city would have to investigate whether or not they, A, are abiding by those parking agreements and B, whether or not, when they have these events at any scale, if those people are actually parking and they are enforcing the parking requirements for them not to park on the street or block that avenue. So the onus really falls on the property owner, the applicant, to make sure that it gets done. If it doesn't happen, then the city has the ability to revoke the permit. So that's something for the commission to consider. When we put these conditions in place, the permit is predicated on all of these things being met. And if they don't meet those conditions, then the permit is invalid.
So is it appropriate for the condition to state a number of additional cars in case or not?
That's at the will and the sway of the commission. If that's something you feel like needs to be added in order for y'all to consider, to make a proper recommendation, that's something you can do.
We wanna be pro-business. Well, I wanna encourage people to do things. I just don't wanna create a condition where it becomes a hazard to the community. Let's hear from the owner and then we'll go from there.
I've got a question, though. What about the lighting? Is there adequate lighting at this point? Or is lighting going to have to be added to this facility if it's approved?
So we don't have anything in our ordinances that require lighting. I would have to imagine that, you know, wanting to open up an event space, that they would want to add lighting. I believe that the applicant is here that could answer on that. But we don't have a required set of lighting measures that they need to take into account.
Thank you.
I have a question also. Even if we get past this point, then the occupancy is gonna be set by the city, right?
It would be. That would be done through the certificate of occupancy process.
And then at that point, they will be the one that said how many parking is needed?
That would definitely generate, you know, so basically, when they do this parking agreement, they have to submit that to the traffic engineer. The traffic engineer will look at it and make sure that that's an adequate agreement. You know, if it's not adequate, then they need to go back and come back with a better agreement. So there is oversight, city oversight in that way. As far as the occupancy load, that would be done by the, or completed by the building official through the certificate of occupancy process, which they would have to do post this meeting in order to move forward and move into that building if y'all and council would like for them to, or, you know, approve the specific use permit to be there.
The number of people is authorized by the fire marshal, depending on the use. If they have fixed seating, they count the seats. If they don't have the fixed seating, they apply a multiplier for that. So if you take this very conservatively, you're gonna have the four hundred people in here easy. So, anyway, I'll get back to you, councilman, or if you'd like to continue, please do.
But my only concern is that if we move forward with this project and we allow them to open this and then we decide later that the parking up and down the street is not working for us, I think that's unfair to the owner after they've made this huge investment in that property to remodel it and then we come back later and say, mm, we don't like you parking on the street. So that's my concern 'cause it sounded like we were gonna try to see if that would work and then come back later and go, no, this is not working for us.
So to clarify, we're saying that you can't park on the street. But because there's no requirement in the Central Business District for you to build a parking spot, we added the requirement that you have a parking agreement with other surrounding areas that do have parking lots. It's quite less expensive to invest in an agreement to allow somebody to park in your overflow parking than to construct another parking lot 'cause that would obviously take up square footage and space.
Yes, I just heard something in there that it sounded like we might move forward with the parking on the street.
No, so in the Central Business District, we allow off-street parking, but because of where the building is situated on Magnolia, Magnolia is a very narrow street and doesn't allow for that. And also on Calder, there are bike lanes, again, wouldn't allow for that. Both streets are too narrow to accommodate off-street parking.
I just would like to see a move forward without some kind of parking arrangement.
That's where I was coming with not kicking the can down the road. And the last thing that you want is eleven o'clock at night in the dark, people walk around the street to go find their parking spot three blocks over. But anyway, let's hear from the owner. And the owners here, Ms. Winfield? Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you today? If you would state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Ebonia Winfield and the business address is 515 Magnolia.
All right, ma'am. Do you have any additional information that you'd like to give us?
Thank you. Yes. So you stated that the property is seven thousand square feet and according, approximately, and according to the documentation I have, and everything, it's about forty-five hundred, so it's smaller than-
It says one forty by fifty, so I just had a quick look at the- One, okay. One forty is for both buildings.
Okay.
Apparently, it's ninety-four by fifty. So it's five thousand square feet almost. Yes.
Yes. And then the other, the third condition about getting an agreement with the neighboring properties, I've spoke with two of them and they agreed. So they are okay with us using their parking lots for overflow.
Okay. And what are you gonna be doing in this property?
It will be an event space to host celebrations and events.
You're gonna serve alcohol?
No. Well, we won't serve alcohol.
Can you bring alcohol in?
I wanna say yes. Yes. With licensed bartender or whatever, the idea is to allow catering and bartender services from outside sources.
Ms. Winfield, what is your experience in this type of work?
I've been an event planner for four years. I've also opened up an event space in Houston. And my experience with opening up new properties, with getting city ordinance and stuff like that, I have experience. I'm a risk analyst and I do it for my company that I work for. So as far as event planning, having my own space and I haven't had these issues before. I've had a venue space in another city. And so, you know, just trying to bring something to Beaumont. I've done events at other local properties. I'm here all the time. And I want something larger in capacity. The spaces that they have here are smaller. I hear the needs of the community saying they want something affordable that on a lower scale. And so that's what I'm trying to offer.
And do you own the property or have you got a contract on it?
I have a contract.
Contract on it, okay. Any questions for the lady?
Do you anticipate most of your events being in the evening? Or the, or day or what?
Day and afternoon mostly, between Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And what kind of time periods are you thinking if it's a PM event?
If it's a PM event, at the latest, in the event, around eleven. And it takes time for cleanup and stuff. So I was just knowing the area. There's a lot of homelessness in that area. So I was thinking have the property cleared by midnight.
Okay. And are you from Beaumont?
I am from Beaumont.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I would like to clear up. So with this, we're recommending approval with that condition that a parking agreement must be submitted. So they couldn't, they could not open this business or get the CO without that agreement established. So I wanted that to be clear. Also, the traffic engineer just let me know that the measurement for the parking or the, you know, the parking where they're agreed to, accessory parking, has to be within four hundred and fifty feet of the property. So you couldn't, you couldn't say, you know, across the Central Business District to the west or to the east, you know, blocks away, that's where our agreement is. It has to be within the general vicinity of the property itself. So going to these, and of course, this will all, you know, be up to the traffic engineer once he receives that agreement to review. So parking, there's this large area over here. There's also a, I don't know if it's in this picture, but to the, spanning to the left of that picture, there is a large parking lot that way as well.
Steve, can you just go to the area view where the properties are highlighted?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So so there's this area. This is a large grassed area over here. But there is this area that serves this building that is, you know, within the vicinity. There's also, it appears to have sidewalks that can be accessible to this property as well. And of course, there's some to this way. So four hundred and fifty feet. They couldn't, they couldn't establish an agreement that's blocks away.
Councilman?
The area to the right, upper purple, is that the old YMCA building?
I believe so.
And there's parking lot on the side of that YMCA. Is that correct?
Yeah, up here.
And where is the bus, old bus station?
Ask it.
Cross street to the lower level?
Isn't that the-
Down, where the area is. That's the Baptist church.
Yeah, it'd be the upper.
That's the church?
Yes. Down below is Baptist church. The old bus was up the page.
Okay. To, up to the right?
Yes.
Would that be within that area?
So-
Four hundred and fifty feet, yeah.
Yeah, and I believe it's measured property line to property line. So, I mean, you know, going from here to here is about-
Thirty feet.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd imagine that it would expand a bit. But that is the edge of that property line where that would, you know, start to be measured.
All right. Well, I just didn't wanna throw a cog in the wheel, but it's just, I hate for us to tell people something that we cannot measure. So, anyway, we have heard from the staff. We heard from the owner. And we're gonna open the floor to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We're gonna have a motion on PZ 2024-105. Yes, sir? Please do.
I understand being precautionous vision that could adversely affect the business economy with the basic assumption that it will present however, at times, we have to look at the reality and see this is a new business. It's a small business and it could actually work. So I always want to err on the side of caution, but at the same time, I have to be thoughtful about individuals who think about stepping out to start their own business. And we want to be business friendly, particularly in areas that are somewhat old and we're trying to see some restoration. So I would prefer to make the assumption that they will be able to get the business. They don't, they can't open. And when that is done, I would like this to be and it's the right size for them and they will be able to run. So I just want to make sure we can be business friendly that we see a new growth.
That's how we started this conversation. We wanted to be friendly and have the business. But as an attorney, you know, when there's a possibility, something going wrong, it will go wrong. So, but again, well, actually, the engineer said that the cup was overdesigned, but that's another discussion. So with that, we just don't wanna have the police to be burdened by having to do something that's not realistic. With that said, we have heard from the owner, the staff, and everybody else. So I'll entertain a motion.
So move for approval with the following condition.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any in opposition?
No.
One no. Thank you. The ayes have it. We're gonna go to PZ 2024-114.
Matt Thompson is requesting a specific use permit to allow a mother-in-law suite to remain at 165 Manor Street. The property is in the residential single-family dwelling zoning district, which requires an SUP for a second dwelling on the property. When purchased by Mr. Thompson, the existing structure had all utilities connected as a utility shed. Mr. Thompson completed alterations to the structure to convert it to, into a dwelling unit. He is selling the property and to ensure compliance with the city's ordinances, he is seeking approval of the mother-in-law suite. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following condition. The mother-in-law suite shall not be used as an individual rental property. Staff sent twenty-one property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the submitted site plan. So in the lower left corner, that is the area of the mother-in-law suite that is abutting Yount Street. This is the subject property. Subject property off of Yount. North. To the east. That's a, that's a large house behind there. South. And I do believe that we have the owner present.
Great. Good afternoon, sir. How are you today?
Very well. How are you?
Very well. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Matthew Thompson and 165 Manor Street, Beaumont, Texas, 77706.
All right, sir. Do you have any additional information you'd like to share with us?
No, sir.
Do you agree with the condition, number one, that this property shall not be used as an individual rental property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for the gentleman? Oh, it's easy. God must love your mother-in-law. All right, we have had the report from the staff, and we just, oh, wait a minute, we need to, uh, open the floor for, uh, public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this case?
Yes.
Come on, let's go. And you are?
My name is Tamara Mosley, I live at 5475 Clinton Street in Beaumont, Texas, 77706.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Hello.
Would love to hear from you.
Um, I have some questions about this, um, proposal.
Go ahead.
Um, when it was built, it was a time when I wasn't living, um, on the property, which is actually butts up to the back of the addition. Um, now the addition looks into my back property, um, so we've lost a little bit of privacy. Um, when the addition was built, were permits supposed to be filed at that time?
Yes.
Yes. Do, sorry, is there any repercussions for the owner?
So they need to, what's going to happen is they have to get this specific use permit for the dwelling, uh, or the dwelling unit, um, and ultimately, that's up to Planning Commission and then City Council. Um, should they approve, then the next steps is that they have to apply for the applicable building permits, and we have to make sure that they have built the structure up to code, that it meets setbacks, et cetera. Um, if any additions were to have been added in there, I believe that it was an alteration at this point, but again, that would be, um, reviewed through that building permit process. So this is step one.
An employee, a city employee, you're saying, would review that?
They would, they would have to apply for a building permit to the city, and then city employees or staffed, um, would, would review those.
The building department would do it.
Because I do have concerns about the placement of the back patio and, I guess, close to the fence line. I'm pretty sure that the constructor has done his job, um, but I just want to be sure of it, is that information that I'm allowed to receive, or do I have to go seek that out?
So they would later, or you would submit for an open records request, um, if you wanted to see any plans or anything like that?
And then I just want to say that the condition that's been set forth is not necessarily something that this owner can comply with, because he's selling this property, so...
Technically being his deed, so it is enforceable. It'd have to be in his deed, so it'd be enforceable, so when he sells the property, he has to disclose that the property in the back cannot be used for rental property, so it'd be at a condition with the deed of the property.
Okay, so I'm just counting on somebody else to do that, though, right? Like...
So if it turns out that, that, that area, because it, the, if, if approval were given with this condition of not being, um, used as individual rental property, if it turns out that they are renting to an individual and it's not necessarily for fa- family purposes, um, then this SUP may, um, may face revocation, so it would have to come back to, uh, Planning Commission and then to Council for review.
Okay, um, I guess that's it. Okay.
If you ever have any questions, you can always call the planning offices, um, and we can discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Demi, I would just make a recommendation to the commission that we add that condition specifically, that it be, um, disclosed to the new purchaser and added to the deed. So any motion by the commission would need to say condition as amended.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so, uh, Mr. Thompson, if you don't mind, just come up here for a second. The, you had one, uh, I'm not sure, negative or some kind of comment that, uh, they're worried about what you have done in here prior without a permit, so I'm not putting word in your mouth, but from what I understand, you are going to go to the city, city building department is going to review the construction, if they have any problems, you're going to comply with that before you get your permit, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you understand that?
Yes, sir.
And I think that should alleviate ladies' issues on constructability or how the building was constructed.
Yes, sir.
All right, as long as you agree with that, thank you very much.
All right.
Counselor?
No, sir, this is coming to us after the fact. So because it's that second dwelling, he has to, um, get permission for the, as you know, for the specific use permit, um, and then, should you guys, um, choose to approve, the next step would be the building permit. So it would be, you know, and this happens sometimes where, um, projects are, are given to us, um, or, or either come through a complaint and inspection, um, and work has been completed without a building permit, so they have to then apply for the building permit. Our inspectors go out, do proper inspections. Should something be covered up, um, then they would have to, you know, it, sometimes it involves a structural engineer to sign off on the project, to endorse the work, um, of that contractor, or a plumber, or an electrician, um, so it, it, it really depends on what the building officials can see, or the inspectors can see onsite.
So that's what I'm getting at.
So that's a se- that's what she's saying, that's the second step. So first, we have to apply, the first step would have been for them to get this permit for it to be allowed. The second step, if you were doing it in order, if he had not did the, in reverse order, the first step would have been for him to come here, so we start here. The second step then, to say that it's allowed, the second step then is for our guys to go out and do those inspections, and in some cases, um, they don't pass, they can't get the structural engineer, and so then this permit is now invalid, and it's revoked, and they have to either make the modifications to bring it up to structurally sound building, or remove the pro- the structure, but, um, it goes in order, regardless of how they start, we go in order, and so we start with this section here, where it's approved and it's available to be there, and then we move to the next step, which is the building construction process.
Is there also not a fine for post-construction permits, or an in peace dollar amount on the permit?
We are a friendly city, Commissioner. Giving and merciful.
I just have one more question.
Question. Okay.
So that property has, sorry, that property has been there for at least a year and a half, because that's how long I've been in my property, so if that hasn't been included in their market value appraisal, which we're all dealing with right now, then those proper taxes have not been paid, and now that house is going to sell for $300,000, and he's not going to be in the neighborhood, and we're going to be paying the taxes on it. And I would love to be, you know, told that it's not anything to worry about, or...
So unfortunately, that's a separate commission, that would be from Jefferson County Appraisal District.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we've heard from the applicant, we heard from the, uh, public, and there's no more comments on the, from the public, so we close the public hearing. Uh, you guys heard all the discussions, we do have one condition plus an amended condition, uh, and, uh, I'll look forward for a motion.
Motion to approve of the amended condition?
Second. We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Thank you. We'll go to PZ 2024115.
Jancy Kimball of Nutrition Services requests an approval of an amended specific use permit to allow a parking lot expansion to the, at their property located at 4590 Concord Road. Nutrition Services has served Jefferson and Harding County for over 40 years, providing meals to seniors daily, transportation to appointments and grocery programs. The request to expand the parking lot is intended to serve as additional parking to the existing establishment. Staff recommends approval of the request, we did send out 30 property owner notices, we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, the area outlined in red is under review. And specifically, give my mouse over here, the, they want to expand the parking lot to about right here, in this area, and because, um, they were originally there, uh, with a specific use permit, that is why this is an amended specific use permit. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Location of the proposed parking lot. To the north. To the south. And I believe we have the property owner and the applicant present.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions for Demi? And the applicant? Good afternoon. You have such a great smile, we have to hear from you.
Oh, thank you. I'm Jancy Kimball, I'm the CEO of Nutrition and Services for Seniors, I'm Linda Kaye, and, um, we are requesting an expansion at 4590 Concord here in Beaumont, Texas.
So where are you going to grow the vegetables now?
We moved them, we have a big spot across the back, so we still have that program, Sharon, you'll be happy about that, but we have 41 in our fleet, and we are trying to move all of our staff parking into the back, because we have a program that we are very limited in parking in the front, so if we can have this parking in the back, we can move our staff parking back there along with our fleet, which will open up that front parking for this program. And originally, on the diagram, it says that we are going to open up at Travis, but we have decided against that, uh, we are still going to have the one-way in and one-way out, so there was going to be, um, an exit right there at the bottom onto Travis, and, um, we are no longer going to do that. I think it's better for us to be able to have the eyes on rather than a place that we can't see and monitor who's in and who's out.
Thank you, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the lady?
Thanks for what y'all do.
Thank you, Linda Kaye.
Very much.
Thank you.
Great.
Any, no questions?
I told them not even say a word.
Oh, good, and they minded you. Thank you.
I said that in front of the attorney, uh, strike that, please.
It's being recorded.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. I've heard from the staff and the delightful applicant, so, uh, look for a motion.
Motion to approve, file PZ 2024-115.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Mayor West, I'm sorry that we troubled you this afternoon, but now you can let us go home.